Okay, everybody. Want to share some next steps for us?
Can I call you?
Watsonville. We have somebody on council. Councilmember Vanessa Quiros Carter, who is a champion for a ceasefire resolution. But she needs two other councilmembers to be on board to get a special meeting to call for a ceasefire resolution. Now that we have Oakland that has passed a ceasefire resolution, we have language that's palatable enough for our council. But at this point, our goal is to get this resolution passed and join the other cities across the United States that have been calling for a ceasefire resolution. So in order to do that, we need everybody here who lives within the district or the city limits of Watsonville to send emails to your representatives. And better yet, try requesting a meeting with these councilmembers and let us know if you get that meeting so that we can support you and show up with you. So there's three councilmembers in particular who we have identified as most likely to be persuaded. And that is Eduardo Montesino, who is the mayor. That is Maria Orozco. And Eduardo Montesino is in District 1. So if you don't know what district you're in, please come check out these maps. We have Maria Orozco in District 3 and Cristo Salcido in District 4. Email your district representatives, even if those aren't your reps, because every email that gets sent is on the record and shows the community's support that we want a ceasefire now, that Watsonville is in solidarity with the people of Gaza, and there is a way to find a solution without the endless siege and bombing of civilians and children. So...
I have a question. What if you work in Watsonville? I'm just over the line.
Okay. So if you aren't in a district, you can email your county Board of Supervisors representative. So if you live within Watsonville, what was it, from Green Valley to River Street? You can email...
How's his name? Felipe?
Felipe Hernandez. Felipe Hernandez. You can email him as your county Board of Supervisor. In fact, he's probably the most likely Board of Supervisor member who's going to do something about this. So if you live in Watsonville but not in a specific district, please email Felipe Hernandez. In fact, call their office and request a meeting. If you live in an unincorporated area somewhere else in the county, it's still worth emailing your district supervisor. If you check out this QR code that we have, it will send you to a template with everybody's emails, all the elected's emails. So check out this QR code. It'll take you to a link tree and you can find a template that you just copy and paste. Both City of Santa Cruz and City of Watsonville have meetings on December 12th. That's a Tuesday. Please mark your calendars, December 12th. Regardless of this issue gets on the agenda or not, we're going to pack the public comment. We're going to stuff that city chambers with us, like us, with signs, regardless if this is an agenda item or not, because we want to show the City of Watsonville that this is an issue that Watsonville residents care about, Santa Cruz residents care about, Santa Cruz County residents care about, and beyond. We are trying to form a larger Central Coast coalition. So you can find out more information about us at our IG, palestinesolidarity.cc, or again, check out this QR code to learn how to get involved with Palestine Solidarity, Central Coast. One more thing to share, y'all, is that December 8th is another National Day of Action for Palestine Solidarity. So also, that's another day to mark your calendars, December 8th. And stay tuned on our Instagram to find out what's coming up then. But those are two dates, December 8th and December 12th.
Hi, could you give me like information about why we're here?
Yeah, I'll take some of that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm on time.
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free!
Free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Huzzah, huzzah, don't you cry!
Huzzah, huzzah, don't you cry!
Palestine will never die!
Palestine will never die!
Huzzah, huzzah, don't you cry!
Huzzah, huzzah, don't you cry!
Palestine will never die!
Palestine will never die!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Cease fire now!
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 Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's the father revolution!
It's the father revolution!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's the father revolution!
It's the father revolution!
Every time the media lies!
Every time the media lies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Every time the media lies!
Every time the media lies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Hey, hey, ho, ho! The occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho! The occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho! The occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho! The occupation has got to go!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Resistance is justified when people are occupied!
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 Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
1, 2, 3, 4, occupation no more!
1, 2, 3, 4, occupation no more!
5, 6, 7, 8, Israel is a terror state!
5, 6, 7, 8, Israel is a terror state!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
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 Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA pays. How many kids did you kill today?
In our thousands, in our millions!
In our thousands, in our millions!
We are all Palestinians!
We are all Palestinians!
In our thousands, in our millions!
In our thousands, in our millions!
We are all Palestinians!
We are all Palestinians!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
It's not complicated, Gaza will be liberated!
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 Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
What we want is total freedom!
What we want is total freedom!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
What we want is total freedom!
What we want is total freedom!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Zionists, settlers, go back home! Palestine is ours alone!
Palestine is ours alone!
Zionists, settlers, go back home!
Zionists, settlers, go back home!
Palestine is ours alone!
Palestine is ours alone!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free! Free Palestine!
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 Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Justice is our demand, no peace on stolen land!
Justice is our demand, no peace on stolen land!
Justice is our demand, no peace on stolen land!
Justice is our demand, no peace on stolen land!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing Gaza!
Stop bombing Gaza!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing Gaza!
Stop bombing Gaza!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
It's the father, it's the father!
It's the father!
Long live the Itchy Father!
Long live the Itchy Father!
Itchy Father, Itchy Father!
Itchy Father, Itchy Father!
Long live the Itchy Father!
Long live the Itchy Father!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
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 Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's the father revolution!
It's the father revolution!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's the father revolution!
It's the father revolution!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Every time the media lies!
Every time the media lies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Every time the media lies!
Every time the media lies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
It's not complicated, Gaza will be liberated!
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 Up, up with liberation! Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
What we want is total freedom!
What we want is total freedom!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
Colonizers, we don't need them!
What we want is total freedom!
What we want is total freedom!
Zionists, settlers, go back home! Zionists, settlers, go back home! Palestine is ours alone! Palestine is ours alone! Zionists, settlers, go back home! Palestine is ours alone! Zionists, settlers, go back home! Palestine is ours alone!
Palestine is ours alone!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's the father revolution!
It's the father revolution!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's the father revolution!
It's the father revolution!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine! Not another nickel, not another dime! No more money for Israel's crime! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
For our children, sons and daughters!
For our children, sons and daughters!
We will honor all our martyrs!
We will honor all our martyrs!
More and more children, sons and daughters!
More and more children, sons and daughters!
We will honor all our martyrs!
We will honor all our martyrs!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Stop bombing children!
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 End the siege on Gaza now!
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 Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
Free! Free! Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Cease fire now!
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 Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
No more weapons, no more war!
No more weapons, no more war!
Cease fire is what we're calling for!
Cease fire is what we're calling for!
No more weapons, no more war!
No more weapons, no more war!
Cease fire is what we're calling for!
Cease fire is what we're calling for!
No more weapons, no more war!
No more weapons, no more war!
Cease fire is what we're calling for!
Cease fire is what we're calling for!
For our children, sons and daughters!
For our children, sons and daughters!
We will honor all our martyrs!
We will honor all our martyrs!
For our children, sons and daughters!
For our children, sons and daughters!
We will honor all our martyrs!
We will honor all our martyrs!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
Viva, viva, Palestina! Bombing hospitals is a crime! Bombing hospitals is a crime! We protect the genocide! We protect the genocide! Free, free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine! Stop, stop the genocide!
Stop the genocide!
Stop, stop the genocide!
Stop, stop the genocide!
Stop, stop the genocide!
Stop the genocide!
It's not complicated, Gaza will be liberated!
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 Colonizers, we don't need them! What we want is total freedom! Colonizers, we don't need them! What we want is total freedom! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Stop bombing children!
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 Cease fire now!
Cease fire now!
Cease fire now!
Cease fire now!
Cease fire now! Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Not another nickel, not another dime! No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
Not another nickel, not another dime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
No more money for Israel's crime!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
I'm so frightened, hear their call! There's that Israel border wall! I'm so frightened, hear their call! There's that Israel border wall! Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry! Palestine will never die! Gaza, Gaza, don't you cry! Palestine will never die!
Palestine will never die!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
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 From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
One, two, three, four, occupation no more!
One, two, three, four, occupation no more!
Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state!
Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state!
One, two, three, four, occupation no more!
One, two, three, four, occupation no more!
Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state!
Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state!
No more hiding, no more fear!
No more hiding, no more fear!
Genocide is crystal clear!
Genocide is crystal clear!
No more hiding, no more fear!
No more hiding, no more fear!
Genocide is crystal clear!
Genocide is crystal clear!
No more hiding, no more fear!
No more hiding, no more fear!
Genocide is crystal clear!
Genocide is crystal clear!
Louder, louder, say it more!
Louder, louder, say it more!
Not a public, not a war!
Not a public, not a war!
Louder, louder, say it more!
Louder, louder, say it more!
Not a public, not a war!
Not a public, not a war!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free! From the river to the sea! Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation! Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Stop bombing children!
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 Bombing hospitals is a crime!
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 Israel bombed, USA paid, how many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA paid, how many kids did you kill today?
Israel bombed, USA paid, how many kids did you kill today? Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free! Palestine will be free!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Resistance is justified when people are occupied!
Resistance is justified when people are occupied!
Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Enough is enough!
Enough is enough!
Enough is enough!
Enough is enough!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing children!
Stop bombing children!
President Biden, what do you say?
President Biden, what do you say?
How many kids did you kill today?
How many kids did you kill today?
President Biden, what do you say?
President Biden, what do you say?
How many kids did you kill today?
How many kids did you kill today?
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
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 From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to the Philippines, stop the US war machine! Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Stop bombing children!
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 Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Cease fire now!
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 No more hiding, no more fear! Genocide is crystal clear! Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine! Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go!
Hey, hey, ho, ho, the occupation has got to go! Cease fire now!
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 Black doesn't live!
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 Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to the Philippines, stop the US war machine! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! End the siege on Gaza now! 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 Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! 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 From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! Free! Free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Not another nickel, not another dime! No more money for Israel's crime! Not another nickel, not another dime! No more money for Israel's crime! One, two, three, four, occupation no more!
One, two, three, four, occupation no more!
Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state!
Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state!
One, two, three, four, occupation no more! Five, six, seven, eight, Israel is a terrorist state! It's not complicated, the civil war will be liberated! It's not complicated, the civil war will be liberated! Down, down with the occupation! Up, up with liberation! Down, down with the occupation! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free by brick! Wall by wall! Zionism will fall! Brick by brick! Wall by wall! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Israel must have food and water! Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter! Israel must have food and water! Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! No more money for Israel's crime! Not another nickel, not another dime! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Hey, hey! Ho, ho! The occupation has got to go! Hey, hey! Ho, ho! The occupation has got to go!
Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine!
Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Resistance is justified when people are occupied! 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 Free! Free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Every time the media lies! Every time the media lies! Our neighborhood of Gaza dies! Every time the media lies! Our neighborhood of Gaza dies! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! There is only one solution! There is only one solution! It's the father revolution! It's the father revolution! There is only one solution! It's the father revolution! Free, free, free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Israel, Israel, don't you cry! Palestine will never die! Israel, Israel, don't you cry! Palestine will never die! The people united will never be defeated! The people united will never be defeated! It's the father, it's the father! Long live it, it's the father! It's the father, it's the father! Do it again, do it again, do it again! Free! Free Palestine! That guy flipped a bird. Free, free, free Palestine! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these borders have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! We want justice, you say how? End the siege on Gaza now! We want justice, you say how? End the siege on Gaza now! We want justice, you say how? End the siege on Gaza now! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! No more hiding, no more fear! Genocide is crystal clear! No more hiding, no more fear! Genocide is crystal clear! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! Colonizers, we don't need them! What we want is total freedom! Colonizers, we don't need them! What we want is total freedom! Colonizers, we don't need them! What we want is total freedom! Free! Free Palestine! In a thousand, in a million! We are all Palestinians! In a thousand, in a million! We are all Palestinians! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Up, up with liberation! Down, down with the occupation! Up, up with liberation! Down, down with the occupation! Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! Israel bombed, USA paid. How many kids did you kill today? Israel bombed, USA paid. How many kids did you kill today? From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Viva, viva, Palestine! Viva, viva, Palestine! Viva, viva, Palestine! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Justice is our demand, no peace, on stolen land! Wall by wall, total freedom! Free, free, free Palestine! Free! Free Palestine! Free, free, free Palestine! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Colonizers, we don't need them! What we want is total freedom! What we want is total freedom! Polonizers, we don't need them!
Polonizers, we don't need them!
What we want is total freedom!
What we want is total freedom!
Free Palestine!
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 Free Palestine! The occupation has got to go!
Free Palestine!
The occupation has got to go!
Free Palestine!
The occupation has got to go!
Free Palestine!
The occupation has got to go! Free Palestine!
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 President Biden, what do you say?
President Biden, what do you say?
How many cases did you kill today?
How many cases did you kill today?
President Biden, what do you say?
President Biden, what do you say?
How many cases did you kill today?
How many cases did you kill today?
Resistance is justified when people are occupied!
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 Brick by brick!
Brick by brick!
Wall by wall!
Wall by wall!
Zion is a warfall!
Zion is a warfall!
Brick by brick!
Brick by brick!
Wall by wall!
Wall by wall!
Zion is a warfall!
Zion is a warfall!
Palestine is our home! Palestine is our home!
Palestine is our home!
Biden, stay alert, go back home!
Biden, stay alert, go back home!
Palestine is our home!
Palestine is our home!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free Palestine!
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 There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's before the revolution!
It's before the revolution!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's before the revolution!
It's before the revolution!
Free Palestine!
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 There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's before the revolution!
It's before the revolution!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's before the revolution!
It's before the resolution!
Azam must have food and water!
Azam must have food and water!
Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter!
Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter!
Azam must have food and water!
Azam must have food and water!
Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter!
Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Viva, viva, Palestina!
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 Every time the media lies!
Every time the media lies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Every time the media lies!
Every time the media lies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Our neighborhood in Gaza dies!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Free Palestine!
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 Ain't no power like the power of the people, come the people...
Power that people don't...
Stop, hey, hey!
Say what?
Ain't no power like the power of the people, come the people...
I haven't been down long.
Ain't no power like the power of the people, come the people... The people come back! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Stop bombing children!
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 Stop bombing children! And the siege on Gaza now!
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 And the siege on Gaza now! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine! Free Palestine! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
And the siege on Gaza now!
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 From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! You have to fucking stand! Free Palestine!
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 From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
For our children, sons and daughters!
For our children, sons and daughters!
We will honor all our martyrs!
We will honor all our martyrs!
For our children, sons and daughters!
For our children, sons and daughters!
We will honor all our martyrs!
We will honor all our martyrs!
It's not complicated, our son will be liberated!
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 Free Palestine!
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 Cease fire now!
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 Cease fire now! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! From the river to the sea! Palestine will be free! Up, up with liberation! Down, down with the occupation! Up, up with liberation!
Up, up with liberation!
Down, down with the occupation!
Down, down with the occupation!
It's not complicated, Azam will be liberated!
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 Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Resistance is justified when people are occupied! Israel, bomb USAK! How many cases did you kill today? Israel, bomb USAK! How many cases did you kill today? Free Palestine!
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 From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
Down, down with the occupation! These border walls have got to go! Free Palestine!
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 There is only one solution!
It's before the revolution!
It's before the revolution!
There is only one solution!
There is only one solution!
It's before the revolution!
It's before the revolution! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine! Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Free Palestine!
Azam must have food and water! Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter! Azam must have food and water! Israel, Israel, stop the slaughter! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go!
From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! From Palestine to Mexico, these border walls have got to go! Viva, viva, Palestina! Viva, viva, Palestina! From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
From the river to the sea!
From the river to the sea!
Palestine will be free!
Palestine will be free!
Free Palestine!
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 Free Palestine!